Are taking their seats, like to go ahead and try to get started. All right. Well, good morning and welcome everyone. The September 19th, 2025 meeting of the Tennessee State University Board of Trustees is now called to order. The time is now nine oh two AM Central Time. And at this time, we will need to call the roll. Secretary Brown, will you please call the roll?
Chair Winton.
Present.
Trustee Trauber. Chair, uh, sorry, trustee Chapman.
Present.
Trustee Smith Knight.
Present.
Trustee Norfleet.
Present.
Trustee Qualls.
Present.
Trustee Smith.
Present.
Trustee Towns.
Present.
Trustee Young Sigler.
Present.
Trustee Bruce.
Present.
We are all present except for trustee Trauber, but we do have a quorum.
Perfect. Thank you. Well, good morning trustees, President Tucker, distinguished guests, faculty, staff, students, and members of the public. Your continued support and unwavering commitment to Tennessee State University is appreciated and does not go unnoticed. I now call to order the September 19th, 2025 meeting of the Tennessee State University Board of Trustees. This meeting continues to mark significant moments in our university's history. And I echo the sentiments made by Vice Chair Trauber yesterday by reiterating our continued commitment to academic excellence and student success while recognizing we are still facing some pretty significant challenges. As I've said in each of these meetings, no transformation occurs without the dedication and resilience of students, faculty, staff, and countless others who have leaned in to shape a better future for Tennessee State University. And we will continue to build that together. Now, my goal for today is to get out of here by noon because traffic in Nashville on a Friday, really any day on the week, but especially on a Friday is something I prefer to withdraw from as expeditiously as possible. Now, with that being said, is there a motion to adopt the meeting agenda as contained in the materials for the September 19th, 2025 board meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sure.
On the agenda, so we have the consent agenda. But there are two items missing from the consent agenda. The board meeting minutes from the June 13th meeting and the board meeting minutes from the special meeting that we had on the fifth. So can we remove those two items from the consent agenda?
I'm gonna get there. You're, you're, you're a step ahead of me. So we have moved to approve the, the consent agenda items. So that the next step is the approval of the consent agenda. And when we do that, I will remove those two items from the consent agenda.
Okay, cuz it was on the full, it's on the main agenda.
That's right.
The second question is, um, I know that we have the Title III lady that, I mean, Title III director that spoke yesterday, we had questions. There was another question on the research. Where will that fit or where can we put that on the agenda?
We have any other business toward the end of the agenda so we can add it there?
Got it. Thank you.
Sure thing. All right. If there's any other discussion, is there any other discussion, any other questions? Okay?
Just to clear, we're talking about Dr. Quit, sir. For your questions. Yeah, Dr. Quit.
All right. And we, I do see trustee Trauber walking in. All those in favor say aye for the approval of the agenda as contained in the board materials.
Aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Okay, so the first action item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda items, which include the approval for the minutes of the June 12th Audit Committee meeting and the June 12 Finance Committee meeting. But which one is missing, trustee Qualls? I knew about the August 5th meeting. Okay.
Sorry, the full board meeting.
Okay.
For June 13th.
And the June 13th, 2025 Student Academic Affairs Committee meeting and the July 1st, 2025 Student Academic Affairs Committee meeting. The removal of the, we will remove the June 13th, 2025 Board of Trustees meeting and remove the August 5th, 2025 Special Meeting Minutes because those are not in the board meeting materials and we have not had a chance to read them. Are there any changes to any of the other minutes? Is there a motion for the board to approve the meeting minutes in the consent agenda removing the two items that were not included in our board materials?
I moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, the question is on the motion to approve the meeting minutes in the consent agenda as contained in the board materials. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The next item on the agenda is the committee reports. We will first hear from the Audit Committee. The chair recognizes the Audit Committee Chair, trustee Darmida Smith Knight, who will report the information items from yesterday's Audit Committee meeting.
Madam Chair, before we move to the Audit Committee, can we get an update on when we will get our, get those meeting minutes?
We can send them after the meeting today. We can actually send them right now.
Thank you. Anything additional? Trustee Smith Knight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Audit Committee met yesterday to consider several items related to internal and external audits. And the committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the June 15 meeting minutes, which were approved by the full board in the consent agenda. The committee voted to recommend to the full, also voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the updated internal audit plan. So on behalf of the Audit Committee, I move to approve the updated internal audit plan as contained in the board materials for today's meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the updated internal audit plan as contained in the board materials. Secretary, please call the roll.
Chair Winton.
Yes.
Trustee Trauber.
Yes.
Trustee Chapman.
Yes.
Trustee Smith Knight.
Yes.
Trustee Norfleet.
Yes.
Trustee Qualls.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Towns.
Yes.
Trustee Young Sigler.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And the motion is approved. This concludes the Audit Committee Report. Thank you to the Audit Committee members and other trustees for your great work on behalf of the board.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Student and Academic Affairs Committee Report. The chair recognizes the Student and Academic Affairs Committee Chair, trustee Jeffrey Norfleet, who will report the action and information items from yesterday's Student and Academic Affairs Committee meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Student and Academic Affairs Committee met yesterday to consider and act on three items and received several reports. The committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the July, the June 13th and July 1st meeting minutes, which were approved by the full board in the consent agenda items. The committee also voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the tenure, excuse me, and promotion packet that was presented, the post-tenure policy, as well as the modification of admissions testing scores. The committee also heard reports from Student Affairs and Housing as well as academic affairs. On behalf of the Student Academic Affairs Committee, I move to approve each of these actions, the tenure promotion, the post-tenure policy, as well as the modification of admission testing scores as contained in the board materials for today's meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Chair Norfleet, just to make a point of clarification, the tenure promotion, it was modified.
Yes, absolutely. It was modified. There is a modification and those materials have been submitted to the secretary's office as well. Just for a point of clarification, you abstained yesterday from voting on the post-tenure policy. So do I need to take these as separate action items?
Yes, are we doing tenure and promotion first and then second doing the post-tenure?
All right, so I will bring forth the tenure promotion first. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, secretary, you wanna call the roll?
All right, on the motion to approve tenure and promotion recommendation as presented and recommended by the Student Academic Affairs Committee, Chair Winton.
Yes.
Trustee Trauber.
Yes.
Trustee Chapman.
Yes.
Trustee Smith Knight.
Yes.
Trustee Norfleet.
Yes.
Trustee Qualls.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Towns.
Yes.
Trustee Young Sigler.
Yes.
And trustee Bruce. Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Bruce, your vote is not needed, but thank you. The motion passes.
Thank you. On behalf of the Student Affairs and Academic Affairs Committee, I move to approve the post-tenure policy as contained in the board material from today's meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just for clarification, my, I abstained, just so everybody's clear why I abstained yesterday. And that's because I was a part of the process of putting together that document. And so that is why I abstained yesterday.
Thank you. Secretary, do you wanna call the roll?
Yes, so the motion upon which we're voting on is the motion to accept the recommendation of the Student and Academic Affairs Committee to approve the post-tenure review policy. Chair Winton.
Yes.
Trustee Trauber.
Yes.
Trustee Chapman.
Yes.
Trustee Smith Knight.
Yes.
Trustee Norfleet.
Yes.
Trustee Qualls.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Towns.
Yes.
Trustee Young Sigler. I abstained. Right. You have the votes, the most, motion passes.
Thank you. Lastly, on behalf of the committee, I move to approve the modification of admission testing scores as contained in the board materials for today's meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Secretary, please call the roll.
The question before the board is, uh, the motion before the board is admission, uh, testing scores changes as recommended by the Student and Academic Affairs Committee. Chair Winton.
Yes.
Trustee Trauber.
Yes.
Trustee Chapman.
Yes.
Trustee Smith Knight.
Yes.
Trustee Norfleet.
Yes.
Trustee Qualls.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Towns.
Yes.
Trustee Young Sigler.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. This concludes the Student and Academic Affairs Committee Report. I wanna thank the Economic Affairs, um, unit here at the school as well as Student Affairs, um, for their work on today's agenda items. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the Finance Committee Report. The chair recognizes the Finance Committee Chair, trustee Charles Trauber, who will report the action and information items from yesterday's Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Finance Committee met yesterday to receive reports on a number of items. The committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the June 12th Committee Meeting Minutes, which were approved by the full board in the consent agenda items. The committee heard reports on enrollment, finance, and budget, and institutional advancement. There was also a discussion of change to the bank reconciliation policy, which we asked for some additional information and that matter will be presented again to the committee for approval and then on to the board for full approval. Are there any comments on any of the reports that we received yesterday? There was robust discussion. All right, seeing none, this concludes the Finance Committee Report.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Presidential Contract. Each board, each board, I'm sorry?
Wait, yeah.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Presidential Con- Contract. Each board member received a proposed Presidential Contract. I have paper copies here with me today. We can handle this in a myriad of ways. But I wanna thank each of you for the time that you've already spent reviewing contracts in preparation for our discussion today. Okay, I can lay out some options and we can consider based on those options. We could, um, option one, we could go into executive session for about 30 minutes and discuss the full terms with just the board. And then proceeds with those next steps. After the executive session, we can discuss it line by line during our meeting today and proceed with the next steps. Just keep in mind that we still do have to have some discussions with President Tucker as the, for the contract to be confirmed. I could continue to go on, but I don't, I don't know about y'all, but I hate having a bunch of options in front of me. So I, I will just wanna make sure that we have it out there for everybody and we can start the discussion from there. Trustee Smith Knight.
Madam Chair, I move, we move into executive session.
Okay.
I second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any abstentions? He knows. Great. Okay, thank you. Sorry to kick everybody out. Sorry to kick everybody out.
Chair Winton?
Yes.
Trustee Trauber?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Smith-Knight?
Yes.
Trustee Norfleet?
Yes.
Trustee Qualls?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Towns?
Yes.
Trustee Young-Sigler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a real estate discussion. And I believe, Trustee Trauber, you had mentioned this agenda item. So I wanted to make sure that, and we talked about this yesterday in the Finance Committee, that we gave an opportunity for the full board to engage on this topic and to kind of set the terms of where you wanted to go from there. Or if there's anything-
I'll defer to you since you had it on.
Okay. So I added it on, one of the things that we have been reviewing in terms of the memorandum of understanding is how do we make sure that as a board and as a university that we're collectively involved in the decisions that are required under the memorandum of understanding. And so what I wanted to do for today is direct the university to commence the process and compel an advisory board of individuals to prepare the board to conduct its oversight in terms of the real estate decisions that have to be made in accordance with the memorandum of understanding. So that was the impetus for the discussion today. It was requested for it to be had in the Finance Committee meeting, but I thought it was more appropriate for the full board to engage in the discussion and to be sure that that is the approach that the full board wanted to take.
serve on this committee?
I have, but I haven't spent a lot of time thinking about it. But I think I can put together a list of what that looks like within the next two weeks.
So when we say advisory committee, would this be made up of university staff, external people to the university, or what would the makeup of the advisor-
The, I think that the makeup should be university staff and in addition to that, external experts that have the ability to review our campus in a way that is more of a holistic approach as we get ready to prepare for our master plan that is coming soon once we get the new approach from the Tennessee Higher Education Commission, which we should have next month. So that, that is, it is all trying to make sure that we are prepared and not conducting work that is misaligned with what other LGIs will be required to do in accordance with the master planning, because a lot of master planning is in regards to the facilities that we have.
I support that recommendation.
And Chair Winton, I would also like to liaise with this committee as part of the board.
Ideally, what I think, instead of having board liaisons, what I would like to have happen is this advisory committee- what, what I would like to have happen is this advisory committee and the administration comes back to us with who they are going to delegate to be the liaison between that committee and the board itself. They may determine that it's just going to be President Tucker, but we will all be actively involved in the process. But the university itself should start this process and come to the board for that approval. And, and for our, to add our insights. But we, we as a board should be operating in the position of we are not the administration. We are the oversight governing body for all of the actions under the memorandum of understanding.
I would also like to just point out that when you're looking for people to serve on the advisory committee, that you don't, that you consider the university community as a whole, faculty, staff, those people that need to serve on that, that committee, that advisory board.
So question of clarity, if this advisory committee, you said in two weeks, you would have who is going to serve. When are, when is the work going to start?
You know, it's a little challenging to make a commitment on short-term notice. But I think in terms of resources that are out there, I'm actually going to be out of the country next week, so that's one of the reasons for that. But I think in terms of starting the process with some of the team members here who have connect, connections in the city, who have specific expertise that can help us, that process will start even next week when I'm out of the country. So I'm pretty confident by the, the week after that, early, we can send something out to the trustees a little bit more about the makeup of that. And at least if we haven't got commitments from some of the people, like Don Hardin, I think could be a great resource. If we determine that they're not available, then at least we can tell you where we are with the framework of the committee at that time. And then continue looking for some additional expertise that we will identify that's missing with the current people that we've identified. But I think, you know, part of the foundation of that, to do the financial analysis, should be somebody on Jim's team. And that, that would be relatively easy to get a commitment out of their organization to do that. Probably within the same money that we're already paying them. I was just checking with you on that with Jim. And then there's some other resources I think we can rely on as well. But right now, I haven't given it a whole lot of thought. But I will in the next couple of days and provide some update about directionally where we headed and resources.
There is, correct me if I'm wrong, this needs to be done by December 1st, correct?
We have to have a plan into the state of Tennessee by December 1st.
Which in all our conversations I've had with them is a plan. You don't have to have done anything in terms of actually divesting of any particular assets or it's, it's really about, do you have a plan that you can communicate?
And here's the lawyer in the room saying what it actually says. I think it's make reasonable progress to create a plan. A little bit different from having a plan on, on December 1, which I think allows a little bit of room of what would be required as of December 1. What is the thought around, since the master plan falls under the authority of the board, any real estate transactions or potential transactions would fall to the board's authority? What's the feedback loop for the board to provide information to this advisory committee on what the board deems to be assessment details, et cetera, that the board will want to see as a part of whatever work the advisory committee is undertaking?
I think, you know, we have, the, the administration itself has consistently tried to ensure that this board was informed on all activities by way of informational sessions, by way of, of, of a myriad of approaches. I think the, it's a little too premature to try to set some type of cadence until we at least get the people in place. And then, once the people have been established, then that committee can work through and you, you know what the expectation is, then you can outline to us when you return with information to the board of what the cadence will be to communicate to the rest of the members of the Board of Trustees.
Yes, and historically, I think the team working together in the cabinet, we, we've never missed a deadline around a commitment that we made associated with the MOU. Or for that matter, I can't remember a situation where we didn't meet the timeline that we provided to the state. So I think we have a team that can get started with this process immediately, put some scope around it, and then submit it back to the trustees for feedback in case we missed something. But I think this is something that is, is a, first of all, we appreciate the opportunity to lead this initiative under the MOU. But I think we got the right group of people to put together that framework and get something out in a relatively short period of time.
Can, can we get a commitment on a date since you never miss a date? Can you give us a date on when you can come back to us with that information?
Let's go with-
We got December 1.
Not this coming Friday, but the Friday after at the latest, so two weeks from today.
And then what is the thought on this process and this information being discussed in a public forum? Is this, because, I mean, this is significant in our space utilization and significant in what may come from it. And if there's an advisory committee, you know, that advisory committee is operating, ultimately, I'm guessing, will make some recommendations, but still the board would have, you know, I'm more concerned about the feedback loop and how that occurs and what will be the timeline for that, but also how that will be conducted.
Well, go ahead.
I think we're going to have to have most of these conversations in a public forum in, in accordance with the law. If there are informational things that don't require the initial public review, then we will address those accordingly. But I, I don't really see much of a scenario that will allow for us not to have the public sessions. And we will do those virtually or however that needs to be done so that we can make sure that we're showing that we're doing the work.
I'm going to ask that maybe, because this feels a little, it feels a little something that if we refer to our governance documents or even the bylaws on just the real estate, the, all of this, understanding the board is governance, the administration carries out, they administer, and there is a difference. I completely get that. I think with the formation of this advisory committee, and that's fine, the administration can have advisory committees and whatever, but I think there still has to be, if we consult our bylaws, and I don't have them here with me, but I think we still need to look and make sure, as Trustee Chapman said, there has to be some type of board presence on this effort, not necessarily on the advisory committee that the administration wants to stand through, but from a board, what's our position and what's our stance? And again, I need to, I'm going to pull up our documents right now and look through, but this kind of feels a little bit cart before the hortage type, cart, cart before the horse type of thing.
Well, I, I think the, the only, I would just push back on that just a little in the sense of we're having a very public conversation about it right now. The expectations are being set right now. So I don't see there being any opportunity for the board not to engage in the ways that it wants to. However, the lead in this initiative should be the administration and we will follow that. And there will be a cadence of communication with the board that will be established. So what we are doing today is simply outlining that a real estate committee will be established by the administration and that real estate committee will provide, provide information to the board on a cadence as they deem to establish it. That is the premise of this discussion today.
And for clarity, the administration is basically doing the groundwork. And I think that's where, we, it may feel like cart before the horse, but they're actually doing the research and the groundwork to bring back to us to make the decision.
Right. Maybe I over-simplify things, but my initial view of this, having this short discussion, is it's no different than the budget or any other initiative that the university leads and then seeks approval from the board. Simple, in simple words.
Well, and I just wanted to make a comment, just to hopefully tie a bow on it, because I'm, I'm going to make sure, I mean, the university leading the data collection, maybe even making recommendations, it's fine. But this is not the board following the university's lead on those items. It's the board directing the university on the things that the board wants to consider, wants to see in a plan that would be presented to us. And I just want to make sure we have that distinction and clarification. And I do have the, our policies in front of me. And I mean, we review and recommend capital improvements, facilities, master plans. We also have approval authority over any acquisitions or dispositions of real estate. And then there's also Tennessee law that says that we must, or that we control all real estate transactions. So I just want to make sure we're all under the same operating knowledge that if some advisory committee is established, it's operating at the direction of the board. And there needs to be that feedback loop for the, the board to provide it. Now, because we do have a committee structure, just like all the other things that are done, I am a little bit lost why this would not be in the Finance Committee and then be approved at the Finance Committee level and then the board level. And then the Finance Committee is ultimately the one that would have this feedback loop providing direction to the university. And then, as with every committee meeting, all members are invited to attend, all members are invited to provide comment. And that's the practice for every other item that we have taken up, like the budget, like tenure, et cetera.
And just for the sake of discussion, I appreciate your comments. The reason why this is being handled this way is we didn't take the memorandum of understanding through any committee. And so this is part of that memorandum of understanding. So what I am just trying to do is align this process to ensure that the entire board is collectively involved instead of sending it to, through a committee. And as the chair, that is the decision that I'm making and that's why it's occurring.
So is it just the real estate as it relates to the MOU? Or are we looking at our entire real estate type portfolio? And, you know, real estate, space planning, space utilization, all of the things that we're doing on campus for, I know Will and his group have done some space utilization studies for the engineering building and all of that. So what is the scope of real estate? Maybe that's the question here.
What the scope is, is what's outlined in the memorandum of understanding. They gave us very specific direction in regards to the real estate of the university. And so this discussion is simply aligned with the memorandum of understanding.
And one comment, Madam Chair, I just want to go back to something you said about the decision that you make versus what our policies say. My understanding of our bylaws and policies, and Secretary Brown can correct me, it would not be the chair's authority to make a decision and say whether something falls within committee or not. The Finance Committee does have the authority over these matters. The Finance Committee can provide and has provided, just as every other committee, the groundwork for all board to participate. So it would be a, a board decision if there was something outside of that. I also don't know if that means that the policy would need to be changed because there could be a special process for a policy to be changed. And if our policies say Finance Committee has authority and responsibility over these matters, one person, and I'm not even sure, just a simple majority vote could override that. And I, and I'm not necessarily certain what, what that means. And I just want to say this because, you know, maybe it's a little bit in the details and may not ultimately matter on a, a grand scale, except for, this is not a dictatorship where things are dictated to the board or committees. I mean, we have a committee structure for a reason, and that's why we've used committee structures in the past.
Right, completely agree. The, again, the only reason why I'm not going through the committee process, because what you're outlining is that one committee then supersedes the authority of the board. And so what I'm simply saying is, because of this matter and the importance of the matter, we are not going to use the committee process in accordance with robust rules of order. We are just going to simply have it all go through the board. And that's all I'm trying to establish here. It is not, it does not have to be a back and forth about where one person thinks should, it should go. And for the purposes of today, what I am offering up is simply for the administration to come back and report to the entire board instead of one committee. That's it.
And just a, a comment, because language matters. It's, it's not a matter for the chair to make a directive and, and say that. And the chair can't make a directive that supersedes our policies. And there's nothing in our, our by, and I'm looking at Secretary Brown, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's nothing in our bylaws and policies that would allow that, a chair to supersede what is already set up in our policies as a, as a structure.
No, that is correct. The board chair does have the authority to set the agenda for the board itself. And you are correct that the Finance Committee Chair gets to set the agenda for the Finance Committee. I would imagine that what we're discussing sounds like it'll come in the version of some sort of motion. And consistent with our bylaws, we do have a motion to, something along the lines of, to delegate to the president authority, which the board has the authority to do, not just the committee itself. So if that's kind of where we're starting, and then the board can take additional action at another time when you want to hear what the President's Committee has decided. But is there something more particular you're asking?
It's a point of clarification on my comment that we're not talking about setting agendas. We're talking about responsibilities under committees. The Finance Committee under our policy has a specific responsibility with the matters we're talking about. So it's not about-
With respect to real estate, yes.
Yes, and that's my point, that the board chair cannot say she doesn't want something to be in a committee that has that responsibility.
I, I didn't hear that as what she was stating. I think it's a little bit-
She, she did say-
Different. But you are correct that the real estate committee is the committee, I'm sorry, the Finance Committee is the committee charged with oversight over the real estate actions that are taking place with the university. And that is an overall responsibility of the board as well.
And then my comment, my additional comment was what would be needed to override what our policies say? Is that a simple majority vote or is that some super-majority vote? Because this would be a change to our policies.
So if somebody were to try and make a change to the policies, let me look for a second and I can tell you what our specific policy requires. Our bylaws require a two-thirds vote of board members eligible to vote if anyone seeks to make an amendment to the bylaws.
I, I have a question, because I, I want to, I want to center. That it sounds like what we're wanting to do is to ensure that we're having a conversation around how we move forward with the MOU as a board. And under the MOU, it says, complete a space utilization plan and a facilities and real estate property plan. But under the bylaws as it relates to the Finance Committee, what's the difference between the two so that I can make sure that I'm centered in our discussion?
If, if you're asking, if you're asking me or-
And I can ask, uh, uh-
Secretary Brown.
Secretary Brown. Secretary Brown.
If you look at our our policy number three, Article three. Or excuse me, I'm in the wrong one, I'm sorry. Policy number two. And this would be Article. Ten, Section. D. I mean, there's a clear statement of the purpose of the finance committee. Which would include allocation of resources and facilities, a very broad statement. And then specifically, under items that are listed for the responsibility of the finance committee. Section D, that's two D. Says reviewing and recommending capital improvement plans, including long range capital and facilities, master plans. And then there's also an item E. That says recommending appropriate action with regard to the acquisition and disposition of real of real property.
Understood. Okay, so part B to that then would be a question to Madam Chair. For clarity, if there is a responsibility of the finance committee. To oversee what Trustee Trauber just shared. Anything that comes out of that committee has to come to the full board anyway. So where is the disconnect?
I think the only disconnect is. I am trying to align what the memorandum of understanding is suggesting that we do. So the only thing in the memorandum of understanding is in regards to a space utilization plan. It does not take away any actions for real estate in regards to the finance committee. What I am saying here is for this administrative committee. To report back to the full board in how they are going to comply with the memorandum of understanding. I am not advocating for a change in our bylaws in any capacity. What I am simply saying is that this memorandum of understanding. Outlines some specific provisions in regards to space utilization. As well as a facilities and real property plan. That data should come back to the board itself.
I I understand. So in to put, I'm gonna use your words, to put a bow on it. It sounds like that there is still going to be involvement from the finance committee in general. That even once this committee completes its work. That work still comes back to the finance committee if there is any involvement around any changes. That's not what you heard. That's what you want to clarify though.
What I what I heard is it goes to the board. And just to be clear, I understand the specificity in the MOU of what it's looking for. But that falls under the broad direction of the finance committee. So that's where I hung up a little bit, that if there is some specificity in an item related to real estate or facilities. That still falls under the broad direction and responsibilities of the finance committee. And I and I did not hear that these things would be coming to the finance committee. I heard they would be coming to the entire board. If it came to the finance committee, that's still the entire board. The finance committee would then bring it to the entire board. And that's where I'm not following completely the need to bring it directly to the entire board. That would just be like tenure and promotion would just come to the entire board. That would be like the budget just coming to the entire board of the audit plan. I don't know why this is so different, even if it's a specific thing that's under the broad direction of a committee.
So the way I I kind of interpret it is that Chair Winton is asking the administration to create a plan. And we don't know what the contents of that plan will be because. If the plan outlines disposition of property, that would go under finance. But right now, we are just looking at the plan, right?
Which still falls under the finance committee because the finance committee has a responsibility for facilities. And that was my point. The specificity in it still falls under the broad direction of the finance committee.
So do you believe that? The advisory committee should report to finance? Explain, can you explain what you believe the structure should be?
I mean, originally, I believed the structure should have been that this should have rested in the committee and the committee made a decision that was then presented to the full board. That was not done. We're here where we are now. I do believe there should be a feedback loop. Of whatever may be established from this meeting as an advisory committee to the finance committee. And there should be a very clear direction and guidance from the finance committee. To this advisory committee on what's needed and what the board will want to see as part of this assessment.
Is there any concern with that Chair Winton to follow this according to? The finance committee and then the finance committee coming back to the board because it seems like there is some reservation.
I have no problem with it going through the finance committee. But I do have a problem with creating additional unnecessary steps. To make multiple reports about the same information from the outset. Again, where we are right now is very high level in the process. There is nothing that will prohibit things to go back through the finance committee. However, in order to start the process. As a board, I was trying to direct through the board. The entire administration to get this information resolved and come back to us with a plan. And if that plan needs to go through the finance committee, we can outline that at that time. That is all I'm trying to do here.
And and my point, in addition to that, and I think maybe we are finding some light to maybe a compromise. That if it's coming back to the finance committee, my one of my ultimate points was this falls within the finance committee. I have no issue if there's some advisory committee made through an action of the board today. But the finance committee should still be the committee structure in place. That provides direction to whatever may be established from this meeting. To say that we're trying to save additional steps, still, I go back to we have committee structures for that reason. And that's almost saying we shouldn't have a board meeting today. The committees. Structures are there to hash out more of the details, working with the administration. To get things in a manner and shape to be presented to the entire board for approval. Even at the committee structure, the voting may be limited to a certain number of trustees, but all trustees attend those meetings and provide feedback.
Madam Chair, just I want to make sure I'm I'm clear on where we are in this process. As I understand what you have recommended, that is for the university, the administration. To establish an advisory committee to address certain matters related to the MOU. One of which being real estate. As I hear from Trustee Trauber and Secretary Brown. The jurisdiction of the finance committee is our matters of real estate. Now, what I have interpreted as a new member of this board is that we've got two separate actions, two separate. Things on the table. The first being our process for ensuring compliance. With the things that are outlined in the MOU by a date certain. Therefore, we have an advisory committee. That will develop a recommended plan. Related to spatialization and real estate. If I understand our structure correctly. That recommended plan would proceed through the finance committee. And on to the board. So I think, at least from my seat, I am very clear and I understand structure and simplification. We're gonna establish an advisory committee to meet the terms outlined in the MOU. That recommended plan by its nature. Will have matters of real estate and space planning. That jurisdiction lies with the finance committee. So if we could establish the advisory committee. The framework, the plan, or whatever, we know the flow after that is to. To and through the finance committee for any matters or any transactions. Is that? What we're trying to accomplish here?
Yes, yes, let's, I I will. I will. Ask for a motion to. To to have this to go through the finance committee. And we will proceed accordingly. I'm I'm fine. I'm fine, thank you.
Can I say something before you take the motion?
Sure.
If the university is putting together the plan. To meet the requirements of the MOU, I I'm still fine with that. The calendar, we're now in September. We have the holidays coming up around November. And December one would be here before you know it. I just want to make sure that if you ask the university. To make sure we meet this requirement on the MOU. And also allow the board to approve it, makes sense to me. But what I thought I heard though, under the and and coming to the finance committee with a recommendation. Which normally the entire board shows up anyway. But if we're gonna have to go through a process where we work with the finance committee first to set out the structure and. And the requirements, we're just adding a lot of extra time. Just for checking a box on a few things. And I'm saying that I think my concern would be that's gonna slow down the process versus. We put together the budget, basically. And while we think this is an approach, then the finance committee can respond to that and say, well. Here's two other three, two or three things that we'd like to see more. I'm okay with that. But if we have to schedule some meetings with the finance committee to determine what that. Plan looks like going forward, it's gonna compress the timeframe and make it harder to get to the deadline. I'd rather keep it more simple and say, okay, we'll do the work. Hope you like the work. If you want to add something more to the work before you think the full board can sign off on it, I'm okay with that. But if the finance committee is leading the initiative and say, okay, here's what you should consider. Before we even put something together, I just think it's gonna create additional meetings and slow down the process.
So President Tucker, let me be clear. I think that it is the jurisdiction of the board to. Request that a plan be completed to meet the timeline in the MOU. The implementation and execution of any tactics from that plan should then follow the normal structure. But for purposes of developing a plan, I think that is absolutely appropriate because as I understand it. We cannot acquire or dispose of any real estate or do any capital planning. Without it following the traditional structure. So that's my long winded way of saying I agree with you.
I just want to make sure. I think the the issue. Becomes, and I am definitely not an attorney and I definitely need to brush up on my Roberts rules. Are we out of policy and process? The bylaws are very, I guess they they are specific. Is there an action that needs to happen by the board if we're not gonna do what the bylaws state? That is my question.
Yes. So the board bylaws charge the board with delegating any powers and duties to the president. That need to take place. So it's properly before the board right now to consider how you all want to proceed. If you want to delegate that authority to the board to create an advisory committee and then to bring it back. I do not believe that we need another motion to further delegate action to the finance committee because as Trustee Trauber said. That's already within the purview of that. So we don't need a motion to move something along that's already within that. Now, if that advisory committee comes back with something that's outside of the purview of the finance committee, then that might be a different process. But I think you won't know until you receive that information from them.
Well, I want to make a motion. I want to make a motion that we that the board delegate authority to President Tucker to establish. A real estate advisory committee to create the plan in accordance with the MOU.
Is there any additional discussion?
I I want to make sure that we are all on the same accord before we move forward, that what. Tish said it best, that we understand that President Tucker. Is merely creating a plan. That's the authority granted. To start the work of the MOU. There is a part of the MOU that is very specific to real estate. And that is what is supposed to come back to. Actually, there are multiple components of this MOU that comes back to the finance committee. So I think in terms of discussion, that we make sure that we understand. That many of the components of the MOU fall up under the authority of the finance committee anyway.
Yep, and just to clarify, I thought we were talking about an advisory committee specifically related to the space utilization. Now it seems that it's evolved into something much broader than what I originally understood it to be. With the motion that's on the on the floor. I take issue with that the university is creating a plan. And I think this goes back to. The board would provide the direction on the creation of that plan or what's being created or what's being done. This is not a university or a president or administration responsibility. The board has the responsibility. I for one would not be for delegating authority that the board has to the president in this manner. And I do think it is. In violation of our policies and bylaws. I would look for amendments to be more specific in that we establish a advisory committee for real estate. That would be working to develop a space utilization plan upon the direction and oversight of the finance committee. And I don't think that that creates any more time in the process as President Tucker alluded to. I think this is just the process that we have as a board and that we must follow. And I also think that whether you did it this way or through the board, it's gonna be the same amount of time because the same individuals are involved. And we can create a timeline if we act now to make this occur and happen. By December one, which again, we need to make reasonable progress towards creating a space utilization plan. I do not interpret it that it needs to be completed by that date.
So for clarity, you are recommending as part of this discussion before we vote. That the space utilization and the planning around this is actually a committee. Formed out of finance and not through the administration?
No, I'm saying that establishing an advisory real estate committee that would be done in this board meeting. But then that committee, which per our bylaws and policies. Would be falling under the direction and oversight of the finance committee, which is how it's stated in our bylaws and policies.
Understood.
I think there are two still two separate things here. And when Tish, I mean, I'm sorry, Trustee Towns, when you said them, it was really good. I don't, my issue or understanding is not with the advisory committee because it's definitely administrative. That's what they will do. The challenge is how we came about this and did we follow our own committee structure and policies to get this done? Like, why did we take it out of the? Why didn't we follow our committee structure? Because the end result is the same. I don't think the timing is gonna change. It's just how we set up in the committees. You'll still have the same amount of time. You'll still be forming. The committee and advisory committee. It's just following our committee structure. That's the part that I'm still. A little confused on and I'm Attorney Brown, yeah. So why are we superseding a committee? Or it seems like we're making it more complicated than it needs to be.
Yeah, is your question specifically about why this is an agenda item in this particular meeting and didn't come through the committees? Or through the finance committee?
We don't want to go there.
I I just want to clarify because again, as I mentioned earlier, it's within the purview of the board as a whole. it's within the purview of the board as a whole to delegate authority to the president if you want to do that. So that is something that would be properly before this committee. Now, what comes in the subsequent steps may be a little bit different and need to, again, follow your normal committee structure. I don't know what else you're seeking clarification on.
If we approve, if we go through.
There is a motion and a second. For the purposes of timing, I, I told everybody what time I'd like to get out of here today. So, um, for the purposes of timing, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
And might I restate the motion to make sure that we're.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
So, um, the question is on the motion for the board to delegate authority to President Tucker um, to develop a real estate advisory committee, um, uh, to address the work as set forth in the MOU.
Yes, that is the motion.
Okay. Chair Winton?
Yes.
Trustee Trauber?
No.
Trustee Chapman?
No.
Trustee Smith Knight?
Yes.
Trustee Norfleet?
Yes.
Trustee Qualls? Trustee Smith?
She said no.
Yeah, uh, trustee Qualls said no. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Towns?
Yes.
Trustee Young Sigler?
Yes.
The yeses have it.
And maybe I missed something. This was for the MOU, not real estate, right?
Uh, the motion was to, uh, for President Tucker to develop a real estate advisory committee, um, to develop a plan in accordance with the MOU.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move that this real estate committee report out to the full board so that we can be aware of whatever the work that's being done is.
Second.
Madam Secretary, call the roll.
So the question is on the motion for the real estate advisory committee to make reports to the full board. Chair Winton?
Yes.
Chair Trauber?
No.
Uh, trustee Chapman?
I'm sorry, were we not gonna have discussion before the vote?
Yep.
We've had a lot of discussion about this. I, I don't.
No, because I don't, I don't under, I'm, mm-mm. Right, so with this particular motion, because you have now been delegated authority to the president, you're saying that that now comes to the full board around real estate. But our bylaws clearly state that real estate falls under the purview of the finance committee. So how are we voting on this?
But, but that's, I don't think, I think that's simplification of voting it up or down. The question is, because this would be a change to our bylaws and policies, does that require some higher vote than a simple majority? And we don't, we don't have an answer to that.
We're voting to change what's in the bylaws, or that's the motion. The motion would be a change to the bylaws in this matter.
But, but then you could not do that because I think there's a notice, uh, notice requirements around.
If, if we want to change the bylaws, we would have to notice that as a separate agenda item. Are you seeking a, a report from the advisory committee to the full board? Or are you seeking to have?
We're seeking the report of this newly appointed advisory board to the full board.
Okay, so just a report?
Yes.
Okay.
So if it's reporting to the full board, then what does that mean in terms of the finance committee, its interaction with the advisory committee? And this may be a rhetorical question or maybe one that no one is capable of answering. But that's, that's where I would, that's where I think that it'd be a difficult, you know, even if it passes, I don't, I don't understand what.
I think we, what we have done is merged two things into one. And I think that's where this went south. That there is either gonna be a discussion about the MOU or there's going to be a discussion about real estate. And because we are trying to merge it all into say, a real estate discussion as it relates to, or a real estate committee as it relates to the MOU is what is creating, in my opinion, the confusion in this. It's two separate things. Because real estate falls under the purview of the finance committee. And you've, you've made this clear.
Yes, re- uh, real estate transactions do fall within the purview. I think what I'm trying to get clarification on is if the motion pertains just to a simple report versus action coming out of, of this advisory committee.
Clarification, are we, we're trying to get a plan that would be voted up or down by the board. If it's voted up or down, whichever way it moves, that plan then will come to finance. And finance can work through that plan at that point for action. That's what I think. Well, I'm stating it clearly. So we're working on the plan. If the board votes for the plan up or down, if we like the plan, it goes to finance and finance works it. If not, then we go back to the committee. We want a new plan. And then they come back to us again.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move we call for the vote.
The question has been called.
Can, can someone restate the motion? I just want to make sure our notes are very clear.
The motion is to have the newly formed advisory committee to send reports to the full board. To report out directly to the full board.
Okay, and was there a second?
Second.
Okay. Chair Winton?
Yes.
Trustee Trauber?
No.
Trustee Chapman?
No.
Trustee Smith Knight?
Yes.
Trustee Norfleet?
Yes.
Trustee Qualls?
No.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Towns?
Yes.
Trustee Young Sigler?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving to the next item on the agenda, which is the naming of additional committee members and new committee chairs and vice chairs. The information is included in the board materials for the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-five board meeting. And pursuant to policy number two, Committees of the Board of Trustees of Tennessee State University, section three, Appointment of Committees, subsection A provides that the board chair, board chair shall determine the composition of and shall make appointments to standing committees and special ad hoc committees. At this time, I would like to appoint trustee Bruce to the Student Academic Affairs Committee. Welcome in person. We saw you online, but so glad that you're here in person today. So good to see you. And then I would also like to appoint trustee Tish Towns to the Finance Committee and the Governments and Government Affairs Committees. Subsection B provides that the board chair shall delegate each standing committee's chair and vice chair or may authorize this committee to select this committee chair and vice chair. Additionally, under subsection four, Membership and Structure, subsection B, each standing committee shall have a chair and vice chair that will serve a one-year term. In accordance with this policy, committee chairs and vice chairs were appointed in May of twenty twenty-four. However, I am not appointing any new chairs or vice chairs today due to the fact that the service of those chairs and vice chairs has exceeded one year. As a reminder to everyone that my term as chair of this board ends in April of twenty twenty-six. Therefore, I think it is appropriate for the continued service of each chair and vice chair until May twenty twenty-six, wherein new committees and chairs slash vice chairs will be appointed by the chair of the Board of Trustees at that time. The next item on the agenda is the president's report. And the chair recognizes President Tucker, who will report on this agenda item.
Thank you very much. I'll try to make sure that we make the designated timeline, but, but it.
Six minutes.
I just want to pro- provide an update to a prior presentation I made around, uh, the pathway to sustainability for TSU. Uh, back then I was the interim president, uh, and I'm very humbled to serve as the president of Tennessee State University. Next slide. But before I leave that one, let's go back for a minute. On the search to find revenue opportunities, uh, Jim became an internet sensation when that picture went out. So we're seeking some, uh, revenue from his firm, uh, as a result of the leads that they now have because of the association with Tennessee State University. So thanks for those dollars, Jim. We appreciate it. Next slide. There were three areas that we really wanted to focus, focus on at Tennessee State University. Uh, the first was to ensure that we could have a culture reset and redefine that at Tennessee State University. The underpinning of that was that students should be always first as it relates to the decisions that we make. Uh, this last couple of months, we're now focusing on improving customer service. I believe if we improve in this area, it would have an impact on student retention, uh, student performance, uh, financials and everything. And I don't want to make this complicated. It's just, can you answer the phone? Can you return that message within forty-eight hours? Internally, can we create the same service levels agreements among ourselves? So that if, uh, a potential grant comes in, uh, the, the general counsel's office should say, well, within forty-eight hours, we're gonna turn it around. If there's an approval for, uh, travel that comes into the president's office, we should turn that around in twenty-four hours. If we can look at ourselves internally as customers and how we engage, as well as, uh, making sure that we have pleasant opportunities to talk to students, uh, it should feel more like Starbucks when you go into it, if you think about it. So when you enter the financial aid department, it should be, good morning, welcome to the land of sunshine. Uh, we can do better in this case. And I think I share with some of you in the past because I like to give examples of this because it's very important, uh, that the culture does change. Uh, we happened to notice when we were communicating to parents regarding, uh, the purge, the first one, that's a full purge that we've done in six years. We spent a lot of time putting together, uh, a communication plans for, for that. And early in that process, a lot of parents just start calling up, asking questions about the communication and how it works. And then we happened to find a folder, uh, in one of our executive systems that worked in the president's office, where literally thousands of requests since two thousand eighteen, uh, about financial aid or have a complaint about this were automatically put into that folder. Uh, because somebody set up the rules that anything that has that name in it, the only conclusion I can come to is that they didn't want to deal with the issues that the potential, potential family member had. That's not the right way, uh, to provide customer service to students. So we're gonna make sure that as we go forward, that the timeliness of how we respond, uh, to students and parents is done in a more effective way. Transparency builds trust and leadership and credibility. Uh, with all of our stakeholders, uh, we stakeholders upon that is students, alumni, faculty members, everybody, that we talk about our financials and where we are and what the key things that we're working on as an organization and how they can support that. Uh, we're, we're, and we're always gonna be very transparent about, uh, where as we are as an organization. I do believe, and we're gonna continue to reinforce this, that accountability drives performance. We have to have the right resources in the right place to implement, uh, transformational change. And I think we've made a great step in that in the last thirty days. And we're gonna continue to ensure that accountability is in place in everything that we do. Next slide. Just to give you an example of students first, uh, they're a little bit old, they'll be students, but it's some of the faculty members. But I just want to show you, uh, some of the evidence around by engaging students, what an outcome can be. Go to the next slide. This used to be a conference room area in Avon Williams campus. Uh, two of our engineering students put together the plan, uh, and how to, uh, repurpose that space. And what you see here is the output of students, uh, stepping up and providing a better environment and opportunity uh, for at least Avon Williams. Next slide. Same students planned and designed. If you haven't been over to Avon Williams, this is the dining room area now. And it looks totally different if you haven't been there in a short period of time. All of that design, or it was done by current students at the university. Next slide. Uh, one of my favorites is the records that keep breaking every other day. Uh, those are the bus drivers. And they said, Mr. President, uh, nobody's ever taken a picture with us. And I said, okay, we're gonna break that record right now, today. So, uh, those are our shuttle buses drivers. Next slide. These are two engineering students who put together that design at Avon Williams. And more importantly, they also happen with some of the renovation that we're doing in the dorms in terms of the student areas. Uh, so once you engage them, uh, they got some great ideas about how to make the university look better. Next slide. Last time we were together, I talked about some of these. Some of them haven't changed. Uh, a couple additions on there was to meet and exceed the MOU requirements. Uh, I do think we're still gonna launch a fundraising initiative. I still believe that changing the, uh, al- alumni giving model from a membership, uh, model to having the money come straight to the university is very important. Uh, and we're gonna get to that one in terms of launching that discussion with alumni presidents, uh, probably before Thanksgiving. But we have quite a few initiatives on here. Uh, I think the one at the bottom right, I'll point out, uh, we're working on a, a president's update uh, that talks about where we are in terms of focus on strategy, a dashboard on whatever we think and would agree as a board, are the key metrics that we should be measuring. Uh, we won't have fifty of those. We'll have probably a dozen of those or so that are, we think are very important to managing performance, uh, at the university and outcomes. And it'll also talk a little bit about what I call the headwinds, things that are holding us back, that we need to account for as we move forward. And it also will highlight, uh, what I call wind behind you in terms of what things are accelerating our performance and perform, and performing well. And in that summary that we provide to the, uh, trustees would include the key initiatives that we're working on. And then we'll have some, like a project management process where is it green, red or yellow in terms of status of that particular initiative? So we're gonna reformat this, uh, as we go forward, uh, now that we have a chance to bring in more resources and get things started, uh, day to day. Next slide. Transformational change is the foundation. We spent a lot of time with SIG and their update on that. I think hopefully all the trustees walked away with the foundational things that have to be put in place for the university to be sustainable over time. Transformational change, and I asked Jerome to come up front because this is my favorite one. I, I have to go through everything at least one time to say, well, I think we can make that better. Uh, homecoming is a very significant culture item for Tennessee State University and most HCBUs. So it is an opportunity, I think, for us to look at homecoming a lot different than what we've done in the past. Uh, before I turn it over to Jerome, you got a little head over there. Uh, that's the website. Can you take me back? But that's okay. Uh, there we go. There's a culture change that needs to take place with homecoming as well and other events at Tennessee State. But I do want to focus on homecoming for a minute because we also have to, I think, have an obligation to reduce risk and things that have historically happened, uh, where patrons who were attending, attending the parade uh, were injured and some bad things happened, uh, multiple times with the parade. So we're gonna have a much more enhanced security, uh, for the parade to make sure people feel comfortable and safe about the environment. Uh, we're also gonna move a lot of activities back to the, uh, main campus. And Jerome's gonna talk about that specifically so we can control the merchandise sales and make sure those are managed more efficiently. The big culture change though is that I, I love to get the phone calls that come in from alumni and others who range from, hey, I've been in the presidential search for, I'm, I'm sorry, suite for the last years and I need X amount of tickets from you and I need you to get me a hotel and I need you to pick me up and take me to the game and take me back. And I said, well, let me talk about our current financial situation and why that is not an option. We also have a need from a lot of alumni and guests to seek free tickets and access to different parts of the game, such as to the field. We, we have an organization to run and since the culture in the past allowed people to call. call up multiple people to try to get free access to all of our games, the only way I know to fix that is to say, we're going to limit that approval to two people. That's the president and the chief operating officer. Because it puts the staff and faculty in a bad place. Because if people are going around asking for, I call it the hookup, so you can get access to free tickets, well, it puts them in a bad place because for years, they've been saying, okay, we'll make that work. And now we're saying no. So instead of them being there in front of this change saying no, it's easier for myself and Jerome for the first time around to make sure we're the ones that say no. And that way, they don't feel uncomfortable about making that decision, the same decision they've been making in some cases for years. So when you hear some of the feedback on that, it isn't intentional because we want to make sure that at the end of the day, if we're going to knock down those deficits, and some people say, Dwayne, there's only ten tickets and it's four dollars a ticket. Well, if you got a hundred people asking the same thing, it's the behavior that you want to stop. So we want to make sure that the trustees are aware of this because my phone keeps blowing up, I know Jerome's phones keep blowing up, and a lot of other people who are seeking an opportunity for one time a year, in some cases just to come to an event and get a free wire. That just doesn't go with me too well going forward. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Jerome, and he's going to give an update in terms of homecoming because it's going to be different than any homecoming that TSU State has had.
Yeah. Thank you, President Tucker. Good afternoon. I've heard that homecoming is so important, that it's one of the most important things we do, so they gave it to the person that works for one dollar.
Actually, we gave it to the rookie and said, good luck.
We are looking at a couple of things. We do want to reimagine homecoming. And the first thing that we did in reimagining homecoming was we built a new website just around homecoming itself. So taking it out of the Tennessee State University web pages that we have and built this page specifically to showcase the events that are happening, the things that are going to be going on, real focus around donations and having money coming back to the university because that's, and the foundation, because that's what we want to do. But we have a lineup of several things happening throughout the entire week. We're starting from Sunday, going all the way to Saturday. There are events that are all committed to doing something and giving back to the university. So we have not put up anything on the webpage or said that it's an official TSU event unless there was some commitment to do something for the university. So some give back to the university. There was a lot of ask to be part of the social media platforms, part of the website, advertising, and we have politely said no because they were not directly related to supporting the university itself. So donations and commitment to the university are a big part of what we're trying to do with homecoming this year versus just having a big party. But we are going to have a big party, and there are a lot of things that we're going to be doing differently. Sterling, if you could go up to the top and scroll to the events under schedule and just hit the events link. We have a lot of things happening, but there are two specific events I want to talk about. One is, there's an activation that we'll have on Thursday, I'm sorry, Friday, starting with the pep rally. And we have partnered with Sirius XM, who's going to be a major sponsor this year for our homecoming event and the pep rally. They'll have a pop out, which they are investing a lot of money. There are things that are going to be happening around that activation in terms of the entire day. There'll be a featured artist. There are several sponsors that'll be part of that day, major corporate sponsors that will be having activations and give outs. They'll be talking to students, recruiting students, having ability to talk about their products and things that they're doing. And then the following day, we're going to have what's called a beats and brunch, which is a brunch approach after the parade where people normally start just getting ready to move over to the game. We're actually going to have some entertainment that's happening during that timeframe that you'll be able to interact with a lot of the things that will be happening inside of Hill Stadium itself. Our goal really is to try to get people back on the campus, back in Hill Stadium, and really start to focus around more of a family-type atmosphere. There'll be a kid, a family section that's part of the brunch. There's a family section as part of some tailgating that'll be happening on campus as well that Saturday. And then we'll have, in conjunction with athletics department, tailgating at Nissan Stadium itself. Now, there are some stipulations in how tailgate happens this year at Nissan Stadium, and we're working through that to make sure everyone understands that there are some restrictions on what you can actually do. So those are the things that we're planning. Sterling, if you go back up to the link and click the, actually, I think you just scrolled to the bottom. Yep, keep going. It's all the way at the bottom. Yep, so these are, go back up there, I'm sorry. These are the events that are happening. They're out on the website. We're putting a lot of advertisement around them. You can click on those links and get purchased the tickets. Those tickets will be first come, first served once those events are sold out. They're pretty much sold out. We don't control the actual amount of tickets that are there. It's based on the venues and the capacity of the facilities that we have. I know a couple of them are already sold out. But I think the hotels, the home hotel, which is the Lowe's Hotel, is already sold out. But we do have some availability at some overflow hotels. We've made that available. So if you haven't gotten a hotel yet, you can actually get in touch with us, and we can, we can make sure that we have some additional hotel space available for you. That's it.
Any questions regarding homecoming? We're also a partner with Metro Nashville Public, I'm sorry, Police Department, and they're going to help us with the, not only the security requirements for the parade, but also to make it more convenient at the Titan Stadium as well. So it should be a very great event. There's going to be our VIP section. I don't know if you mentioned that part about that as well.
I did not. So the way this, if you click on this schedule, click on the schedule, Sterling, and yes. So we do have a VIP package. Actually, I was hoping to get to the graphic. We have a graphic of Hill Stadium and how it's actually laid out and all the different spaces that's underneath there. There's a VIP tent that's associated with the, with the foundation. So in conjunction with the foundation, we're sponsoring a VIP tent. That's everything in that VIP package that you see there. There's also other spaces. We have corporate tents that we're renting inside of Hill Stadium for a lot of our corporate partners and sponsors. There's a, what we're calling Greek Road. So all the D nine are actually sponsoring a tent that they'll have inside of Hill Stadium for all the D nine groups. And then we have vendor tents as well as food trucks that'll be part of the experience. So food will be purchased there. There'll be vendors who are selling things inside of Hill Stadium, merchandise and other giveaways and things that, of that nature. So it's going to be a fun experience inside of Hill Stadium, I think, on Friday and Saturday morning.
In closing, about bringing the merchandise on campus and those sales, we can then control and participate in the revenue associated with those sales.
Yeah, absolutely. We've been active about trying to get those vendors off of Jefferson Street, getting them into Hill Stadium and be part of that experience and try to maximize the revenues that we can get in terms of merchandise that says TSU, but TSU is not getting any profit off of it.
Any questions before we close out?
Where do I get my fish fry ticket?
Scroll down? Actually, it's on the, it's on the scheduled slide, but yes, you can get it online.
All right. Last slide.
I have a question or maybe a comment going back to the ticket request in the games. Do you have and maybe establish, working with institutional advancement, a process to target specific people that you would want to offer these type of tickets to come to the game? Are you looking at your top ten donor list or corporate partners? How are you thinking about doing that? Or do you now invite your top ten donor list?
All of the above, and including the trustees, too, will have access to a lot of these major events and will provide the tickets for those events. Which certainly donors, because we've identified some additional donors that are giving significant support to the homecoming event.
Yeah, we actually partnered with the foundation who have agreed that they would actually host top donors as well in their VIP section.
Any other questions? All right. In closing, I'd just like to highlight, because we spent a lot of time with SIG. I don't know if we made the connection that T-HAC is paying half of that three million dollars for the work that's going on, belief below the, what I call the waterline, but are very important to our foundation in terms of building the capacity to grow and, more importantly, meet the needs of students in a more timely, effective manner. So we want to thank T-HAC because, oh, by the way, in T-HAC's case, they provided free resources for a long period of time. Most recently, about three weeks ago, their commissioners for T-HAC took a tour of Tennessee State University, which is the first time that they've been there. In the case of TBR, they also donated quite a few resources at no charge. And the charges that we now have in place today, I think, are somewhat below total market in terms of the cost when you look at it. But we need the foundational work that they're doing to be in place so that we can replicate this experience for students and as well as getting to the right financial outcomes that we would like to achieve. So they're going to be with us for a little while longer, and they're committed to Tennessee State. I think it's a very good partnership that we have underway. We still have a lot of work to do to continue to get better at a lot of things like financial aid, but we've made a lot of progress with the partnership with them. Our trustees, cabinet, consultants, all stakeholders working together, I believe we can achieve our financial and academic goals. More importantly, we talked a little bit about this, but I want to close on this, and that is, even though we have a five-year turnaround plan, I think it's to our advantage to try to achieve that and knock down some of these deficits that we have and turn them to positive sometime between two and three years. But in order to speed that up, it's going to take a lot of transformational change across the network. And I like to tell people upfront so that when it happens, it's not a surprise to them because my definition of transformational change means it hadn't happened in the past, it's not happening right now, but we're going to look at everything from graduation to time to hire to anything that allows us to be more efficient as an organization and move forward. Sometimes it's hard for people to embrace that because they have spent twenty-five years just doing everything the same way. We're going to be very upfront with those individuals and work with people to give them a chance to move forward and embrace some of the change. But there's going to be some cases where unfortunately, some people just are adverse to change, but we're going to work with them as much as we can. So to get to that two to three years, we really need to get revenue and grow fast. And I think we're off to a good start with the new enrollment executive that we have. And we also got to continue reducing costs. So thanks, everybody, for your time. Here we go with the iconic, you don't have to be transparent. The first time the people I know, they say, who's the white guy over there on the end? But Jim and his, and his staff sort of operate like they're already employees. That's what I like a lot about them, and they've added quite a bit of contribution. And as you can tell, they like to jump right in on everything that we're doing. So thanks for that, and we appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you to everybody. We do have, I made a mistake, I skipped over an item in the agenda, so we've got one other action item to do, and that is the adoption of the Board of Trustees twenty-twenty-six calendar year meeting schedule. It was in your materials. Are there any discussion on the twenty-twenty-six proposed meeting schedule? Great. Is there a motion for the board to approve the twenty-twenty-six calendar year meeting schedule as contained in the board materials for the September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five board meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. Will this also include an opportunity to have a board retreat?
Yes. I don't know exactly when that will occur. We've got to figure out some financing and things of that nature, but that we will try to get that scheduled at some point. Okay, there's a motion and a second on the table. Are there any other questions or comments? Great. Secretary, please call her on.
Chair Winton?
Yes.
Trustee Trauber?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman? I'm sorry. Trustee Smith Knight?
Yes.
Trustee Norfleet?
Yes.
Trustee Qualls?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Towns?
Yes.
Trustee Young Sigler?
Yes.
Right, the motion passes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. The final thing on the agenda is the board chair's report. I will not be making a report today, but thank you all for the time. Thank you all for, yes, ma'am?
Yes, other business, I forgot. So close. Okay, all right. We do have one other item on the agenda that, again, I forgot. I am very, very sorry. Please charge it to my head and not my heart. But there are some questions for Dr. Quick, I believe. So if you could come up to the podium.
So the question is really, thank you for the report and the executive summary. Hopefully, the rest of the board was able to read the executive report and summary in the appendix. Question really centers around the research and the amounts, as well as the faculty who are participating in those dollar amounts that you reached. So what percentage of our faculty are contributing to the dollars that you recommended? That's one question.
Yes, I think we had some discussion about that. I did an assessment two years ago, hasn't changed that much. About seventeen percent of the faculty really submit eighty-four percent of the grants. I'm going to get pushed back on that. I would give some details about where those numbers came from, but I would, you know, the data used came from reliable sources, which I got from the teams.
Yeah, so the question of the concern, it really goes, and it's kind of tying into a lot of the discussions that we have. If we're thinking about being student-centered and how we're student-centered, the faculty and making sure that our faculty are productive is really important, particularly even as an R-two institution. So if seventeen percent of the grant dollars that we're getting in is, makes up for eighty-four percent of the funding, how do we encourage our faculty to submit proposals? What type of, it kind of goes back to Dr. Norfleet's question yesterday about faculty development. What are we doing?
Yes, I'm going to just correct it a little bit. So seventeen percent of the faculty are responsible for eighty-four percent of the submissions, not the total funding. So you can't get funded unless you have submissions. So I just want to make that clarification. For research development standpoint, listen, I'm doing everything I can, and the reason I'm doing everything I can, because when I did that assessment, that was alarming to me. So I provide research development across the institution, really have identified the underperforming colleges and departments and making investments into those spaces and places. So, for example, there's some money going to, they got a grant for, for the College of Life and Physical Sciences with Department of Biology rehab that building in the process right now, this week, actually, today or tomorrow, to award seed grants. And that seed grant program has grown, and there were a hundred and four applicants, and that's never happened. I'd also say about that is my commitment to President Tucker and to the institution is that my operations are all solely externally funded. I don't use any of my budget or the institution's budget to do these things. These are all coming from my grants. And so I'm happy to continue to support faculty across the board, but really, really supporting those faculty.
but really, I'm really supporting those faculty that have not traditionally and historically been participants in this space.
Do you work closely with academic affairs?
Yeah, so Provost Melton, myself, President Tucker, we just had a really in-depth conversation a couple of weeks ago where I presented a SWOT analysis. But yeah, so everybody's on board with these initiatives. They understand what the tasks are, what the weaknesses are, what the strengths are.
Last question is around IDC. I was trying to prepare for this in my question, so I went to RSP to look at what our current rate was. But...
Our current rate is forty-two percent. We actually, we have had some challenges in the past. And this is what we're doing right now, working with Bradley and Luanda in grants accounting, is our IDC rate is under provisional status. It's been in that status for a couple of years. That's a problem for a couple of different reasons. You have agencies that now they'll make their award, but they will not provide the IDC to the institution. And that's a problem from a revenue standpoint. So that's where we are. We're working through it. And that proposal should be completed and submitted to HHS any day.
So if you have a guess, some in a rough amount, how many of our grants may be subject to no IDC because we're still in a provisional status for three years?
You know, in all, in actuality, not that many. That pushback has come from the USDA. I'm actually in the process of right now, I'm dealing with one grant. And the IDC for that one was like three hundred and thirty thousand that they're sending. They're going to withhold until the, either we get a new rate proposal or all I have to do is get an email from the HHS saying, like I did last time, that we approved the provisional status. They just haven't responded. And they haven't responded likely because of the direction that they're getting from, you know, the executive branch.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Sorry. Do we have quorum? All right. Is there a motion?
To adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think the motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you all.